Call the beaming order, if you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the government of justice for all. Can I get a roll call of the members present, please? Madam Honor.
Council President, Justin. Councilmember Witten.
I am here.
Councilmember Conover.
President.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Bozak. And Councilmember Rivas.
I'm here.
We have five present.
Perfect. Councilmembers, Justin and Bozak will not be joining us this evening. They had other things going on that they couldn't get away from. Also, Harold Harper is stuck in mediation. I just got a text from him. I told him, "Don't worry about it. I don't need him tonight." So, what you see is what you get. All right, so we're here tonight to talk about raises. So, as we embark upon this wondrous journey through the briar patch of budgets, let's get an updated blow-by-blow of where we're at on the money. So, Vicki, would you please tell us where we are, mostly general fund here, let's talk about the general fund.
Okay.
Where we at thus far in this process?
As the general fund now stands, we're just over 39 million. And that's an increase of $847,541 over the current year adopted budget. And our hope was that we could grow no more than about 1.3 million.
So, we're sitting around about 500,000?
To be precise, President, I'm sorry, Councilmember Witten.
What used to be.
If our target is a general fund budget of 39.5 million, we right now have wiggle room of 442,929. So, you were close.
That's close. All right. So, that's what we're starting the equation with, guys. Moving into this, there's a couple of other things we can do to try to scrape up a little money, to pad that, just to shade. And we can talk about that as we work through. And I'm not sure how you guys want to start this, but I think it's important that we've got a lot of special raises, I guess, for lack of a better term. I think that's what we've been using to describe them, that are being asked, or we've been asked to consider. If our hope and goal and dream is to give our employees across the county a raise, every increase, any particular special raise increase, will cut into our available funds. So, just understand that. So, have that in your minds as we, as we talk about this. So, Vicki, can I ask you a couple of questions? Let's just kind of, just so we know where we're at. Let's start with a percentage raise. If we, if we gave across the board 3% to everybody, what's that number? 3%.
No special raises and no new positions.
Sure we're starting.
Except for those ones that we talked about. Okay. Across the board, 3%. The raise amount would total just over 531,000. But we have to account for FICA and PERF. Those are unavoidable expenses. So, the total there is 631,669.56.
Just always give me the big number, don't.
Yes. 632, 632,000.
All right, so 3% would cost us 632,000. Give me 4%.
Four.
About a million?
4%.
Okay.
All right. Now, we don't always up here agree on the philosophy of percentage raises. I've always liked those, but they're for valid reasons, those amongst us who are more interested in flat raises. So, let's talk a little bit about those. If we were to give every employee in the county a $1,500 raise, what would that cost us to the general fund? You have that number?
Yes. 755,543. So, about 756,000.
Okay. And then how about 1,000? So, that gives you kind of a general idea of what we're looking at. How do you guys want to approach these special raises? Maybe one thing we can do is look at some of those, we'll break them out in categories. One might be, any particular raise requests, Vicki, that are not general fund increases? Let's start with those.
Absolutely. Jeremy, I believe you didn't.
Yeah, you gave it to me, I don't have it.
No, you need one too.
I do.
This is Dean Moos' updated, and Jeremy, you need it.
We gave you the one from last week that.
Do you, do you want to give a lot of copies of this, Vicki?
We all don't get it?
No, no, no. Everyone else has it.
You already have it.
You had it, Sylvia.
Do you need a copy?
It's yours.
How many more copies do you have?
Jeff, you got yours?
Yeah.
And Jeremy, you got yours?
Does she need to go make us copies?
And Sylvia? No, we have. Thanks. This is what you got. It has a.
Oh, okay. I have a card.
Okay, so now.
Okay, so let's go to the non-general fund requests.
Okay. Special raises. We have E911.
All right, we're gonna take them one piece at a time. I think that was the sum. So, the E911 is about 18,012 total increases. If I understand this correctly, Vicki, we have a communications manager, training coordinator, and four shift supervisors for raises.
Yes.
And then we've got health department, third deputy.
Yeah, and that's not necessarily a, I'm sorry, that is a special raise. I'm sorry.
It's not much. And these are all non-general fund, right?
Correct.
And then there's a lock in the highway, 104,137. What's in that fund that would support this? How much do we have in there? The highway, that's a big one.
The current balance in the highway fund.
Can we start and ending?
We started this year.
Yeah, that'd be a, that'd be a good place to start. What's in there now?
Cash balance, 942,000.
How much more is coming out of this year, do you suppose? Your idea? If you don't know, that's okay.
No, we, no, I'd have to look that up.
This is state, primarily state funds. They also get excise and all of that.
I know what it is, I'm just wondering how much we're burning through. All right, so that fund seems to be able to support 104,000, 137.
Yes, yes. Our projections show that what they submitted, based on the projections from the state, it would be able to accommodate it.
How about the E911? How's that look? We shore that up from other places, right? So.
This is out of their surcharge fund, 1222. They had just over a million at the start of the year.
Mm-hmm.
And their current cash balance is a little bit more than just 1.1 million.
1.15 million.
Okay. And then MOH, that's probably okay. That's not much. We have plan commission, stormwater. And there's director, assistant director, GIS CAD, and project manager. What's your guys' pleasure with this one? Any thoughts on this?
We discussed pulling the two top ones under Commissioner.
Yeah, so if we take out the raise to director and assistant director, what's that leave us with?
And that's based on restructuring, that's why they're doing that.
Right. Right. So, if we pull that out, what's that increase then?
That's only the 7,000 for the special raises for those two positions.
Yeah, so that leaves us, there's other ones in there. So, what's that? 7,000 total, okay. How much is in that fund now?
Okay.
I know how that's, I know how that beast is fed, but how much is in there?
Just stormwater, not plan commission. Remember, stormwater and plan commission, they get, some of these people get it from the both funds.
Right.
So, just stormwater has 2.0, about 2.9 million cash balance.
All right. So, it can support that, obviously. And then we've got prosecutor, domestic violence prosecutor. And that raise is proposed to come out of what fund?
Yes, Fund 2503, which is the domestic, what's it called? The pre-trial, yeah, the county user fee.
How much is in there?
Currently, 138,162.
What do we start the year with?
Yeah, okay, we need to go to our old system.
This is one of the funds that we broke apart because it was a sub-fund.
That's fine.
So, bear with us.
Okay, so we started the year with 111,377.
How much has gone out a month?
Oh, it varies.
On average?
Yeah. Based on, let's pull that up, earlier this year, yeah, 3,000? That would be about average there.
Okay.
Be a little bit.
And then let's, let's move to the next page and talk about the hourly raises and moves to the general fund. Some of these are pretty simple. There, there were many options given, all of them a little confusing, but one of them, from the prosecutor's office, was to move salaries from 2501 to general fund. What's in 2501?
Okay.
How much?
Current cash balance is 145,940.
What do we start the year at?
And we have to go back to the old system.
So, we're not gonna move those this year. So, if you're calculating anything to the general fund, that's not going in. We have a 2505 to general fund from the Sheriff's Department, Captain. How's that fund look?
Current balance in that fund is 155,000, and it started the year with 157,000.
Okay. All right, so that's on the back burner for a bit. And then we've got some non-general fund hourly increases, which are somewhat no-brainers. So, let's attack this in pieces. Let's take, on that second page, guys, there's a series of non-general fund hourly increases. I don't see an issue with any of those, do you guys?
No.
So, can I get a motion on these non-general fund hourly increases? E911, health, plan commission, storm, prosecutor, 4D, and highway. Got a motion in a second?
Yep.
All those in favor, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So, that's gone. And then with respect to, let's go back to the page before, the non-general fund increases. So, the, what's your pleasure on the E911 increases? Or do you want to come back to those after we deal with all the raises?
Yeah, I get their non-general fund, but I, I don't.
Want to come back and deal with those when we look at all of them?
Yeah, I don't think we should do different things to the general fund that's non-general in terms of, forget it.
All right, well then, let's get to it. So, what other, want to go to the general fund increases then, and see what we have left when we're done? Decide our new positions?
Yeah.
Since that's kind of a, have to. So, we have the, a request for a public relations coordinator for the animal shelter. What's your, what's your thoughts on that? Will we build any animal shelter? Ideas, we're gonna staff it, but we are armed with a bit of a budget constraint, so I just want to know.
Well, anything going forward, any new positions are going to affect this bottom-line number for the rest of the employees.
That's true. So, are we wanting to hold off on that one?
Well, we, we, yeah, just keep going down the list.
Commissioners, E911 IT, replacing, all right, so Vicki, I want to, I want to be clear on a couple of things, or I want to ask a couple of questions. I know that we talked a little bit, and there were some proposals to do away with a couple of positions and replace them with.
Correct.
And when we asked in the prior meetings what our hit to the general fund was, you'd taken those positions out.
Correct.
But we hadn't put the positions in.
Correct.
So, the number you gave me earlier, I know we talked and I asked you to put those, these new positions back in.
Yes, we did.
All right. So, that includes these back in?
Yes. So, the commissioners got, eliminated those two positions, and they put this new one in. We put that back in their budget.
Okay.
As a safeguard.
So, there's a request for a $65,000 E911 IT person, which the two E911 dispatchers that were being replaced, did that equal 65,000?
No. It was, it was 90,000.
So, this actually is.
Redo.
Target, yeah. Do you guys have any questions about this one? Scott, I know there's been at least a lot of talk or bantering about the IT and E911 and IT with the Sheriff's Department, and how those overlap or maybe don't overlap. Do you guys have any questions on the sheriff or 911?
Where was this paid out before? I know we have, you have a 911 IT person, don't you? Where's that paid?
We don't have a dedicated 911 in a 911 budget.
Come on up, Scott.
I am.
Buddy. All right, so, hold on. So, let's, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Scheibels.
He's in the Sheriff's budget.
Under what?
He's also in charge of the Sheriff's IT, and part of 911's IT.
So, we do.
Unofficial. So, we're fixing that problem.
So.
We're attempting.
So, where is that position in the Sheriff's budget? Being paid for?
You want to see the 144 for the Sheriff's Department?
So, let me ask, let's ask this another way. So, the E911 IT, is that, this person that we're putting in there, is that, is this person replacing what the sheriff currently has? Are we replacing Scheibels? Are we replacing some of Scheibels' duties? So, Scheibels is still gonna be doing what he's doing over at Sheriff, and we've got this E911 IT person doing.
I mean, right now, to give, to put the picture together, we have basically half a person that's able to work on 911 IT. That's all we have.
Okay.
So, what we're attempting to do is obviously make that a little bit more robust, and that's why we took the two telecommunications out and tried to go with the 911 dedicated IT person.
So, it doesn't make sense that the, and the answer's probably, no, it doesn't, but I just want to make sure. The IT person at, that's out of the Sheriff's Department, can't also be the IT person for E911?
I mean, there can be, there can continue to be overlap.
But they're not, they can't be the same person, or we can't have a department that's that. I mean, because it seems like we're not, we're not duplicating our.
No, we're not duplicating. The person will be under that.
The position is open current, and there was, historically, there's been some, some problems in managing that position because the responsibilities.
What position?
The IT position that was, that was, that was managed out of the Sheriff's Department and managed out of.
Because didn't we have a 50-50 guy? Wasn't there some that pay 50?
There were. And that position is not filled right now.
Right. And is that position what this is gonna be doing then?
Yes, sir.
So, will, so will this person, so the.
Half of it. Half of it.
Okay. Go on, Jeremy.
So, are we, that position's not filled. Are we removing that from the jail? You said it's in the jail?
Yeah, it's in the jail, we're not removing it.
Is that position gonna be filled by you? Is that?
I'm a half person. I'm a half, with the half money, part-time person in our.
Okay, explain then, that person will, the role of that person. Well, you're, they're creating an IT person for E911. You guys have positions that cover IT for E911?
I mean, what happened, we were last, since you left as a 911 director, they hired Jocanis, then they hired CJ. Well, the guy behind the curtain's always been Dave Scheibels, has been the 911 IT guy that we paid for. At 2:00 in the morning, when IT has a problem, they call Dave, okay? So, what they're proposing apparently is to create a position of IT just for the 911.
Correct.
And that Dave would go back to the Sheriff's, which we need him in the Sheriff's Department. And we actually need a part-time person also.
Which we have the money for, because that was, that.
So, Sheriff, it's your position that the approval of this won't adversely affect the Sheriff's Department?
No.
Okay, that's part of it. And it is, and it's your position that we need this and the sheriff to continue to have his.
Yes.
E911, or the IT.
Yes.
And it's your position too, Sheriff, that you need your guy, and really what happens over at 911 with their IT guy is of no real consequence to you?
It shouldn't be, I don't see it.
Okay. All right, that sounds all right. What's your pleasure with this, guys?
I think we motion to accept it.
I'll second. Discuss it. All those in favor, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Coroner, seven hourly deputies, $8,209. Coroner here? Yeah, he is. So, come on up here, Chuck, let's talk for a moment. So, right now, you have seven hourly deputies, you want to take it to eight?
That is correct.
Make the pitch, man.
Make the pitch, okay.
Throw the ball.
Well, as all of you should have received, the letter kind of explaining everything, but it just, you know, since I've taken office, there's been a huge increase, it's like a 43% increase in calls. And with the, all of you have seen the drug increases throughout the county, that's not a secret to anybody anymore. So, I'm just asking for another deputy to kind of help pick up with all the increased caseloads.
So, right now, you're, to, to deal with those increased caseloads, what are you, how are you doing that? I mean, are you using?
Well, unfortunately, I've had to get my secretary licensed, and she's been helping out on some of them when we get multiple calls at once.
So, are these paid out of, are these paid out of hourly then, or salaries?
Hourlies. It gets paid out of hourly.
So, what's, how's his hourly look for this year?
One thing to kind of, my deputies get paid a little, geez, get paid a little bit different. They're hourly, but it's really kind of what I would describe as a salary.
Yeah, which is kind of, which led me to my question of how are we paying these guys?
Right.
Is it a per-call basis?
No, it's not per-call. They just take a certain amount of shifts per month.
Let's have a little peek here. What's, what's in his hourly and what's in his salary?
How about we just call it that? That's what we're going to do. Forget nothing. It's coming. Okay, so, let's see.
He's burned up most of his hourly, or at least a big chunk of it?
So, salaries, the original appropriation was just over 62, and so far expended about 48,000, and hourly, original appropriation of 66,000. And we spent just over 51,000 so far.
So, it should take out pretty much all.
So, you think you're gonna use all of that?
Absolutely.
Okay. My hope and dream was the answer. And we could give you the extra deputy and see what you need. Okay. What?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said something.
Okay, what do you, what do you guys want to do with this?
Well, it's not a full-time employee.
Nope.
So, there's no benefits involved for PERF. And he says they need it, and we're calling out his secretary. I move to approve.
Second.
Motion's second. Need further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Now, Vicki, as we move through this stuff, we hit, and thanks, Chuck, appreciate it. Let me know what we've got from that original 400, 47,000 or whatever we had.
442, 20.
Yeah, 442, thanks. What are we down to?
That 65 was already figured in there, wasn't it?
I think it was. No?
I thought she said.
Well, yeah, she did put it in. Yes, she did, you're right. That's when she put it in. You have that number, Vicki? And this is gonna be a constant question, just to let you know, so, yeah.
We're doing it. We just, we were keeping track of it. Oh, we're adding and typing curve rates. Wait, what is this?
So, let me, let's do it another way. If we're, if our, if our target is 39.5.
Right.
Tell me how close we are to that number.
Okay.
I know that's the high end of target.
Yes.
You gotta shoot high. They aim high.
That was already added in.
All right, we got 434K. Let's keep on tracking, we're gonna.
So, that's like our wiggle room.
That's our wiggle room, but that wiggle room is what we need for raises.
Correct.
Yeah. So, we're gonna wiggle all our raises into that.
Correct.
Okay. And we're still working our way through new positions. Let's talk about the sheriff's patrolman. So, what are your thoughts on that? Jeremy, I know you and I have had a lot of conversations about that.
Yeah, and I think it's important to hear, you know, the sheriff speak a little on it, is, when's the last time that you hired a new patrolman? I mean, increase your.
We increased it my first term through a grant, a cost-per-hour grant. So, that was probably in sometime around 2001, maybe 2002. We have never, other than that, not in my time, have they ever increased the size of this department.
Do you suspect the population's grown a little bit since then?
I think you all know that South of 30 is grown.
Was that a real question, Jeremy?
No, it wasn't.
It was a lead on, right?
Yeah.
But I think everybody knows it's county. The one thing that separates quarter counties then from all the other counties, I mean, you can compare us like to any county, Vanderburg, Tippecanoe, Hamilton, everybody likes to compare us to Hamilton because of the size. But the difference is that we have unincorporated areas. We're still mostly unincorporated. And most of these counties like Hamilton and Vanderburg, they're, they're incorporated, which means their Sheriff's Department is primarily concerned with the jail, where we still have almost 85,000 to 90,000 people living in an unincorporated area. We have more than Lake County's. So, obviously.
So, you think you need the additional person?
I mean, if you could give me, we've talked. I mean, if you could give me, we've talked about this, the nausea in our department, if you could give us one guy a year, you know, in the next three or four years, then we'd be back, we would be where we need to be. We're not asking for, you know, we know, obviously, we see the budget is tight, but if we could get one guy, it would be tremendous hit for us, it would be a tremendous increase for us.
What do you think, Jeremy? Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, I just-
There's a second, any further discussion?
I believe it's important with, I mean, the population's growing, we know we have some issues in this county that we have to cover, and that just, we're staying at the numbers, we're increasing the burden on the officers out there right now, so I think we gotta really consider this this year and possibly the next couple of years.
It's been fifteen years since we've hired a new police officer.
Well, since we've expanded, we've hired lots of guys.
Well, replacement.
It's on, it's the fifty-
Oh, okay.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Vicki, what's the new number?
Three seventy-six, two twenty-nine. I didn't get that.
You all understand what this, what's happening here, right?
Yep.
And it's at the fifty-three, seven fifty-one salary, correct?
Yeah.
No, like, no raise?
And we will figure our way back in.
In the parks. Is Walter here, I know. Is he here now?
Yeah.
This, refresh my memory here, the juvenile services, that, do you remember that conversation?
A little bit.
Yes.
The judge could speak on that at all with, with our Parks Department?
As are probably, no, but, because it was kind of a different thing.
We're working with him, is that what you're asking about?
He's asking for a new person, juvenile services to the parks, twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight bucks.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Helping out, there's somebody out at the juvenile detention center helping to get down there and they're doing some programming out at the park.
I take it back, the judge knew about it. It was a good call. Okay?
Wish he, wish he was here.
Wasn't that a Pink Floyd song?
I wish he was here.
Wish you were here.
Yeah.
What do you want to do with this? We're three hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars left.
So, I mean, this is going on now, it's, it's obviously happening now, it's, he's staffing it with somebody, with somebody.
Does he even, what's his additional resources?
Anyone?
What are you asking?
Does he spend his entire allotment on salaries?
Well, that's in the, in the general fund for perks?
Yeah.
Who is handling it now, Mary?
Sorry?
Who is handling it now, Judge?
Who's the person?
Yeah, I mean, he's apparently, he must have somebody.
Well, what are your motion on the guys?
Well, he's, I think he's looking at his hourly, what he's expended, so-
It was like he burned up like eighty-three, eighty-two and change of the hundred and forty-two.
He's got some less than seven thousand. He should have some additional funding left over in hourly unless we're not paying somebody.
Is that true, Vicki, is, does he, does it currently support a twenty thousand dollar increase? I mean, it doesn't seem like he's spending.
Right.
Listen, listen, I guess, yeah, here's a suggestion, I guess a suggestion, we don't do it now.
Yeah, I think we would.
He's got money in hourly, if he needs to come back next year, we can, we can deal with it.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan.
Yeah, money's obviously there right now.
Yeah. Okay, so the jail, now Vicki, I know on one of these-
Right.
You already have the lieutenant in there, right?
Correct, at that forty-two, oh nine eight salary.
Okay, cool. And it looks like you've got three new, other than the lieutenant sheriff, looks like you've got two more jailers and a program director slash chaplain. So what are your questions of the sheriff? And we've already hit that, so what's that thirty-seven, seventy-five, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and thirty thousand is what he's asking for? Understanding sheriff that that will cut into about half of what we have left for raises? What are your thoughts on this?
You asking my thoughts, huh?
No, I'm asking you two to do the right thing here.
What's you going to do as a resource like that, you know, that you might have available?
We don't, this is it.
I mean, that's the whole question, you know, do we, do we give up raises for-
I'll tell you what, here, let's do it this way, let's, let's come back to this after we're done with the raises. Let's come back to this, let's see what we've got there, let's see what else we can do. Because honestly, guys, we're almost getting to the point where it's about time to motion to adjourn here pretty soon, we keep heading in this direction, so. Let's go to the non-general fund new positions. Some of those are kind of low-hanging fruit. So we have the commissioner's facility assistant, twenty-five thousand, five hundred. We have questions of the commissioners on this? Scott? So why do we need this to go from part-time to full-time?
This is just a newly positioned.
She's currently part-time, isn't she, full-time?
This is the-
Part-time now.
Part-time admin for the facilities director, taking her to full-time with the range of projects that we have going on and the things that will be flowing through that office.
So this is, who's this?
Chris, what's her name?
He's out there now.
Okay, so, and this would be paid out of a non-general fund, eleven, oh, eleven, twelve.
And we, and then we reduce that facilities budget comparatively?
To do this. You all understand this is one that they reduce their budget doing other things to make available for this? Non-general fund, we got a motion?
Motion's second.
And a second discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? E-911, deputy director, you guys might want to stay here. Deputy director, nine-one-one, one at seventy thousand, and then one class telecommunicator, our first-class telecommunicator, four of those, to the tune of one hundred and fifty thousand, that's two hundred and twenty thousand, five oh four.
And that's completely contained in the E-911?
Is this part of that restructuring that we've done to make way for these available? We have a motion, a second discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Plan commission storm water. Technician inspection, one at forty-five thousand, building administrator, one at thirty-six five, engineer shared with highway, one at twenty thousand, it's a hundred and one thousand, five hundred, but again, this fund will support that, correct?
That's correct, and this also dovetails into the twenty million dollar bond and the, and the resulting want to be able to do some of this stuff in-house, so we can reduce our reliance on the outside consultants, keep these things in-house.
We currently save, we recovered about five hundred thousand dollars this year, just
Oh, we've, the amount of money that's been saved by having our own, our own engineer's been pretty extraordinary and obviously-
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Highway department.
This again, I believe, is the raise, is this the raise request within highway?
This is a new position, project manager, one, project manager, two, technician permits, engineer, one.
Oh, this is, this is still part of plan in storm water, this is part of that reorganization. It's a continuing effort on bringing that department into line with the duties that they have up there and along with moving some people around and putting them in the appropriate positions. Again, it's self-funded and the fund can support it.
Is that true?
Second. Motion's second, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, guys. How about the health department, food service inspector, one at forty-two thousand? We're gonna be doing a lot of musical chairs, so I'm just trying to get some-
We're here at your pleasure, Mr. Wood.
So, let's have the, so we have the health department fund, will it support this forty-two thousand? I mean, is this, what's the story on?
Close, yes. We believe that the budget that they submitted can be supported, but I don't want, I'm not a hundred percent certain of that, it's very tight with the miscellaneous revenue. But we think the budget that they supported is within the levy, it's not going to affect the general fund levy. Our numbers are showing that it would be sufficient.
When you say close, I mean, if you were, we were at a cocktail party, I'd ask if it was too close.
Yeah, well-
Do people even have cocktail parties?
The health, health department has enjoyed a carry, what's called an operating balance, and we would be dipping into that in order to make this work.
Exactly, so let's talk about, what's the operating balance, what was the carryover of the operating balance last year?
I'm on, going on memory here, we were around four hundred thousand.
Okay.
This isn't, this is not the beginning balance, this is the budget documents that we submit to the state.
Right.
This is where we would try to convince them that we're within the levy, so we would be dipping into that.
Is there a requirement, should I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Is there a requirement on this inspectors position, like per capita, that we have to have a certain amount of inspectors, is it open?
I don't think so.
Keith is here.
Yeah, Keith, come on up, man.
I saw a hand.
Yeah, he's coming up. That'd be a wonderful question for Keith. Evening.
Sorry, guys, I didn't see you sitting back there.
So you heard us talking, so we, we're looking at this food service inspector, forty-two thousand dollar position, and I think Jeff had a question, is per capita, is this something that's required, or is this something that you guys think we need for, you know?
No, it's, it's not, it isn't a requirement. When we talked before, I gave you some, some numbers, we have about six hundred fixed sites as far as food services and innumerable partial year and temporaries. We actually issued nine hundred and sixty-five permits last year and did almost twenty-three hundred inspections. So there, we're getting to the point where we're pretty, we're not getting them all done twice a year as we're supposed to, that's our biggest concern.
And this forty-two thousand, that's a full-time person now, I assume?
Yes.
Does that forty-two thousand include benefits and, or is that gonna be more?
FICA and perf would be included.
That's, so in that forty-two thousand number, that's the whole deal, or that's forty-two thousand?
Oh, no, that's just the salary.
So.
So what with the FICA and?
And we would build that in, yes.
So you're still, I mean, Vicki, let me start with you guys, are you, you're comfortable in the sense that you think your budget can support this kind of increase?
I believe so, in my discussions with Vicki, the forty-two comes from, if you look at the other food service inspectors, the lowest one is forty-three, one, seven, five, and she's been here a few years, so we would want to bring them in, a little bit lower.
Understood, ma'am. So Vicki, you looking at, you're dying to say something?
We will have to increase on your insurance to accommodate this person.
But as we discussed before, there's two people-
Yes, we, we took that into consideration. We increased your insurance to cover those other two, but not the two who are definitely not affected.
So with all of that, armed with all that knowledge, auditor, you're still, ma'am auditor, you're still confident that this is doable?
I'm not a hundred percent confident, when we turn over all the numbers to the state, eighty-five percent. We'll take a look at all the revenues that are coming in, in the final analysis, and we will try our best, yeah.
I'm motion to accept.
Motion, I'll second that, whatever it was. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Wooden, did we discuss the special raise?
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna come back.
We're gonna come back, okay.
We're gonna do a lot of musical chairs, I'm just taking these- This is gonna be a long, arduous meeting, so anybody that thought it might be quick and painless was, was unfortunately mistaken. So we're gonna be doing some time here. If you leave before we're done, your requests are automatically denied. That's not true. So RMWRD, we have an operator, hourly to full-time, forty-eight thousand, five hundred, going from full-time, hourly to full-time.
He was currently an hourly employee and all they want to do is make him a salaried employee, with, there's no adjustments here.
We, we talked about that, already had the benefits included.
Yes, yes.
So we're good on this?
So we're just-
We have a motion, can I get a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so now, what is our number, Vicki? Is it still three seventy-six, two twenty-nine, or have we hit it anymore?
Three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two fifty-four. Reason it changes because the new positions in E-911, even though they're funded by surcharge, general fund picks up their FICA and perf. And that was a decision that was made.
Any of these other positions that might be non-general fund that hit our general fund for FICA and perf? If we encounter one that we say is non-general fund and you know it's gonna hit the general fund?
Yes. Okay, the facilities and CD, I'm sorry, lit, adult probation, although they don't have, they just have those mandatory raises, and we already took that into account.
Okay, now, I think that's all the non-general fund increases.
And my prosecutor, especially, will not part, they will general fund, but they will transfer, we weren't new general fund.
I do. So, come on up, man. So when you're talking about moving salaries, you're talking about the three moving salaries from twenty-five oh one to general fund?
Well, I mean, that'd be nice, but I understand that's not, yeah.
Yeah, that's not, that's not- I find that highly unlikely.
Yes.
So-
The other batch of raises that were deputy and staff.
So I know that, here's the thing, so I know that you've got, so we haven't gotten to those yet, but I know that you've got some raises, and some of those are not, and I'm, correct if I'm wrong, I know you gave us different scenarios, some of your prosecutor raises are directly general fund generated, and then there's some that aren't. Like, I think your four D?
Those-
Were gonna be coming out of the four D?
Discretionary.
Discretionary fund that wasn't gonna be general fund.
Yes.
So-
And all the criminal side were all-
General fund increase.
General fund increase, but transfer, not new general fund money.
What do you mean by transfer?
Well- The investigator's salary, we don't have an investigator, we don't need an investigator.
So it's a reallocation of the money previously allocated to that salary position, it was still general fund money, but was the submission- But the investigator, that was the person that we used at the drug task force, correct? And we still have somebody doing that drug task force.
But they're paid-
Out of, out of the sheriff's-
Salary.
Yeah, so it is general fund. So we're not saving any money to the general fund here. Maybe out of your own pension.
Correct.
But it's disparate coming out of his.
But it's not new money coming out of his, it's already-
Same, it's a wash.
Yeah, it's a wash for him.
So your increases are a straight-up hit to the general fund?
That was already budgeted to my account.
But then I had, but then we've had to move that to his, no, you understand?
No, that's not, I don't-
So your investigator, that was the person you were paying to run?
Correct.
The drug task force? He didn't have to hire anybody, who's running the drug task force now? And who's paying that person?
We just moved them all, we were gonna adjust his salary though, right, chief, because our sheriff, because we were gonna do something to put raise him up in a pay scale? We did, right, 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 but I'm just, I'm just saying, we didn't hire a separate guy, we already increased that salary, right, okay.
So the guy you take, you took to be in charge of the- So, the guy you take... You took to be in charge of the drug task force, that person was previously doing what?
He was lieutenant in the detective bureau.
So, you get away with the lieutenant in the detective bureau position?
No. All we did, we made him a captain. We moved the cap... Lieutenant on the road went into...
Took the first class position, and used our money to get him up to a captain.
So, you've taken a person out of the detective bureau, you've put him in charge of the drug task force. You've moved somebody in the detective bureau to take that position that you moved out. So, the person that you took off the road, I mean, if we keep going down the ladder here, someone came off the road. So, we have one less person on the road that we just shored up by giving you another person on the road?
Yes.
And you wanna tell me that it didn't cost you anything? All right. Come on. So, all right, so, I understand what you're saying, right?
And the bottom line is, is that... And I get where you're coming from. I don't, you know, I don't need an investigator, but if you don't give me the money, I'll try to figure out how to hire an investigator. I mean, it's... So, I just thought that the money would be better used because it's not new money.
What would you use an investigator for? Because the last time you came, you said, "I don't need an investigator," because if I had an investigator, it would be saying that all the police departments aren't doing a good job. That's what you said.
Yep.
So, if you're telling me that if we don't give you raises, you're gonna hire an investigator, are you then changing your mind, and you're saying that all the police departments are doing a bad job?
Absolutely.
Or are you saying, "I'm gonna hire that investigator because I wanna be spiteful because you guys didn't give us our raises?"
No.
Okay, I just wanna be clear.
Yeah, I mean, there's no spite involved.
No, okay. I just wanna... I wanna put the two comments together.
I understand.
Okay, so, let's talk about the 4D. That might be an easier one, too. So, prosecutors got 4D raises. Now, in your prosecutor 4D, is it feasible, sounds like it is, that all of these increases come from your discretionary fund? Is that correct for the 4D?
Correct.
Okay.
That is, from my understanding, that's a flush, a very flush account.
At two-hundred-and-some thousand, I think is the correct...
With more money coming in than we anticipated going in.
All right. So, that one's another one of those non-general fund, can support itself kind of increases.
Motion, we accept that.
There's motion, a second on the floor. I concur. Any comments about that? Well, I just wonder where we're headed now.
Is the FICA... Is it gonna cost more with the FICA and the PERF? Is that gonna come out of...
I think we have two comments here, and both of them are good. So, one is, Vicky, as we do things like that, does it... The FICA and PERF come out of general fund money, or is that all gonna be coming out of the discretionary?
It would come out of the...
4D fund?
The 4D.
Okay. Now, Jeremy's question, I'm sure, was gonna be, are we heading down a road now, or we're just gonna start giving big raises, even if it's non-general fund?
Right, they're gonna turn around and back and look at the general fund, and people are gonna get way less.
You're right.
I mean...
I agree with that, too.
We agree with it, but you guys both made a motion, so I don't know.
True, Jeff. I mean, the motion could withdraw, or have you voted down, Jeremy? Do you feel very strongly?
No, I mean, we gotta take off in some direction at some point.
We do, man. I'm just watching the number drop, and I wanna make sure that we understand that when we get to the end of the game, we gotta play within the numbers we've got. Again, I've got a couple ideas, but I'd like to see how... What we have left. Well... So, there's a motion, a second on the floor. Do a roll call. This is for the 4D increases.
Okay, 4D increases, let's see. Councilmember Khan, over.
In good conscience, can't do this right now till we know what our bottom line is for everybody.
Okay. Councilmember... Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozickson? I hear Councilmember Reavis?
No.
Councilmember Justin? And Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Okay, so, three ayes and two noes.
So, no, we need four, we need the majority of the body. Okay. All right, and one other thing, we're gonna come back to it. So, and I know that I talked to my Justin, talked a little bit to Andy, to get their thoughts and ideas about what they wanna do. Because what I don't wanna do here is get all this figured out, and then those two guys come back and say, "Oh, my gosh, I would've voted no or yes." Whatever we do tonight is what we're gonna do, because the auditor... Vicky? You need this... You need us to finish this tonight, right?
Yes.
Because you're running out of time.
Yes.
Okay. Well, do you guys wanna embark on the continued talk of special raises? Or do you wanna start, go back to giving everybody a raise and see what we have left for special raises? I'm gonna make a couple of suggestions, kinda help that along. But which direction would you all like to go?
I think we should run some numbers and...
All right, so here's the thing, here's a thought. We're down to three hundred thousand and change. So, one thought that I had, and that I've talked to a number of you about, is I don't want to... I don't wanna tap into or go beyond our general fund and tap into that foundation money any further than we have. We've approved a... Or we passed a resolution for four point five million to come, and that's it, all right? So, it's not like we have a bucket full of money there, and we can't bank on a, you know, fantastic earnings year every year. So, I think four point five million is a comfortable number for us. So, we can't really tap that much more. Or at all, actually, unless we wanted to revisit a resolution. The one thought or suggestion was, we have some money in our current hospital interest budget. And as you know, we're getting away from hospital interest because we're moving into the foundation earnings, generating those, or paying those things that we had in hospital interest. I don't wanna tap that hospital interest out completely because it is a one-time deal. That fund is gonna be, for all intents and purposes, gone. So, whatever we do with that carryover money is a one-year deal. So, one possibility is, we pull some money down, maybe about four hundred and fifty thousand. That will leave about that in the hospital interest money. And the thought is, we could use that four fifty to reduce the general fund budget for health insurance. We could allocate that to our health insurance and free up four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general fund. That would leave one more year of that left over in the hospital interest, which would give the commissioners a couple of years to deal with the health insurance, and hopefully get us four, five hundred thousand dollar savings on our health insurance. Is that feasible? Understanding that if your answer is no, there are no raises. What's your answer?
You gonna ask me to do the right thing, too?
I'm gonna ask you to give me the answer I want.
Well, let's talk about it a second to make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
Okay.
So, I think, right, Vicky, you have that budget up?
Don't pull it up.
Is like a million in for health insurance? Right?
We'll pull it up in a second. I wanna get my answer to my question.
I think there's a significant possibility of the four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar reduction in the health insurance for next year. We are in a position that I believe that is feasible.
So, if we pull... Thank you. If we pull... If we reduce our general fund budget, health insurance by that... By pulling the four hundred and fifty thousand out of the current hospital interest, that will leave roughly four fifty, five hundred in there. Now, that's banking on you reducing that health insurance cost sometime between now and the end of two thousand and nineteen, because that gives you an extra year to do that. Is that feasible?
Well, I have to make it up next year, too, right?
No. Because we have the... We're talking about... So, when you gave us your... When you gave us your health insurance budget in the general fund, you were counting on us pulling a million dollars out of hospital interest as well?
Correct.
Then, yes, the answer is you have to do it next year.
Yeah.
And we're all counting on it.
No pressure.
The claims are what the claims are.
So, at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars pulled over, or reducing the insurance...
Are you talking about taking that out of the commissioners' general fund?
Yeah.
Or reducing that by four fifty?
Yes.
Are you talking about leaving the million in the hospital interest?
No.
Because we... I just wanna make sure we're not cutting twice.
No, we're not.
Okay.
So... Don't have a question. So, we reduced the... All right, so here's... Let's just make it simple. Reduce the general fund in the commissioners' for... The commissioners' general fund by four hundred and fifty thousand on insurance.
Right, okay.
Now, what's our number? For what we have available? Seven hundred and...
Seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four eighty.
Now, listen, guys.
I heard a different number.
That's doable? Sounds like the commissioners have hopes of that happening. Seems reasonable. But I don't think we can do any more than that.
Uh, no.
No.
No, because after that, that point...
We'll leave the million sitting where it's at.
And what's our reserve?
You mean our carryover?
Yes.
About two point eight at the end of this year, right?
General fund?
Yeah.
No, no, I mean...
Health insurance?
Health insurance.
We're projecting it to be... Hold on, just one second. Four point eight. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Wrong year, three point nine.
So, between our reserve on the health insurance and us rebidding this out in April...
And our carryover of the general fund...
We can weather a storm.
What's our... Okay, so, with that in mind, I'm gonna ask the auditor one question, and then I'm gonna ask you a question. What is our total budgeted for health insurance with that reduction? Leave the million sitting in hospital interest for a minute. Just reduce the general fund four fifty for insurance.
Okay, hold on, just a sec.
And the question I'm gonna ask you is, what's our... With our... With the rebid stop, the hard stop loss with the insurance, what's our worst-case scenario?
Ten point five as we sit here.
It used to be thirteen. All right, so we're...
We used to pay thirteen.
So, that's our worst case scenario. That's if everybody needs a transplant. So...
This meeting goes longer.
We're gonna be there, ain't we? It's gonna go longer.
Hold on, just a sec.
I'm just digging under rocks. You understand?
Oh, I have said one, oh, two.
Rocks ain't there.
All right, Vicky?
We're at a total of seven point one million.
So, we've got a seven point one, and that's without... And so, we still have the million in hospital interest.
Correct, yes.
We've still got the carryover from the insurance, and we've still got, God forbid, miscellaneous revenue. Say that question for the whole class. What was your question?
Attorney McClure is looking at me. That seven point one includes all funds, all appropriations from airport, recycling, everything. So, those are the total appropriations that we would be...
You brought in all the funny funds.
Yes.
So, we're looking at catastrophic here, three point four. Are you telling me that what was the appro... What was it last year? What are we in now?
Currently, seven point eight.
So, we had seven point eight this year?
Correct.
All right, so just to be clear, because hospital interest could only support a million dollars this year for one year, it was one point three.
Correct.
So, there was a three hundred and thirty-three thousand?
Yeah, because we reduced foundations to one million.
We brought that down to a million. So, before we started, we were already three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars less on the health insurance line. That's why that we went from seven eight to seven one.
Let's not confuse things with the facts.
Yes.
So, our worst-case scenario is a horrific year. We're three point four deep, and we would have that.
Correct.
We would have that. I mean, that would do it next year, so you really gotta get that insurance down.
That's the goal. It may look a little different when we're done.
All right, let's assume all of what I said is true, which is always a mistake. We're at seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, give or take, Vicky, correct? Of available money?
Uh, yes.
All right, now, having said that, that's what we have, guys, and that is it. I wanna take a five, ten-minute break.
Yeah.
Scott, you got a minute?
I do.
No, I... We kind of know what...
What number did you get for insurance?
You could do that. Rhonda? Please vote on Rhonda.
No.
Okay.
We can't do this?
No.
I guess we could do this. That goes, we would have never, we would have never done it. I'm Spanish. Not because I could do this. Could do this, and then give.
Yeah.
Where's Reivers?
He's talking to Brian outside.
Who was?
Reivers, he's talking to Brian outside, I don't see them anymore. Hello, fine, how are you?
I guess I get to go. And a budget change, but the budget's actually lower.
Okay.
We didn't see it there before.
Oh. Oh, yeah, exactly.
Were those, were those men going to go to state race, marry, then he turned in? Were those men needed, uh, they just.
I bet you, but don't you, unless you want to stay for the whole thing.
Like I wanted. That's why. All right, thank you. You too, always. How are you doing?
Oh, I'll tell you. He's dancing, great talk. Yes, he is. Yeah. I'm doing good. I'm believing. And, you know, I was looking at my age. I was, I was focused on that. And I don't even, don't even feel, my mother quit driving, she was dying, she was, for that.
We do my dad's wife some sleep.
Hello there.
These are so fun.
Don't you love this?
Oh, thanks, Derek.
Really? Well, I think for this whole episode, we've shown them how much money, this is it, what we got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Put up your display.
We're right there. We can afford fifteen hundred. We can afford almost a four percent. But anything else we do on this page takes that amount out. Every one of these is cutting into that. As we're there.
If we're in, is it dead?
Yes, ma'am. My hopes and dreams before we set this up are to stop the table. We're almost to fifteen hundred on the table.
If you're going to give, uh, some stuff away tomorrow night?
Yeah, let me go there. Understood. Okay, where's, uh?
Jeremy.
The missing members of our. I think, uh, does Jeremy go to the, the little councilman's room? Feel free to share that.
I, I definitely will.
Okay, so I want to revisit one because it, something dawns on me, and I want to ask the commissioners a question. The, it, it, going back to the animal shelter public relations coordinator, is this position that's tied up in cities and towns, or?
Part, yes.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a problem if we don't do that.
Correct.
You, you understand what I'm saying here?
Another revenue stream.
Yep.
So I would like to revisit that public relations coordinator, because the last thing we want to do is.
Also no proof.
Mess that up.
Second.
Motion to second discussion, all in favor, senior public speaking, aye?
Aye.
So that number goes in our general fund?
Yes.
So about half?
Half.
You understand that, Vicki?
No.
Scott, would you please explain to her that.
The way the budgets have been set up is that we move things out of the general fund to add.
So we're going to affect the other budgets, okay.
Being paid by.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's about a seventeen thousand dollar hit?
Correct.
Plus benefits? Right?
Yes.
You understand that, Vicki? Are they paying half the benefits?
No.
No, but.
It's all in general fund.
I can, I mean, we can make that, I mean, I can, I can back the first of the year to do that. We're going to hold you there.
So make a list.
Make a note.
We have insurance reduction, and we got this.
You check that at the reword?
Just to clarify, please, you do want seventeen thousand, what? One hundred in the general fund, seventeen thousand in the other. That's not how it was submitted. It was submitted all in the general fund.
Yeah, but the, but. But the revenue, he's saying revenue's coming in.
All this money's got moved over to the other spot.
Right.
Yes. All of it needs to be where it is, right there.
In the general fund.
Correct.
So what, so wait, hold on. Other positions were moved out. So should we, should she, should she be, so the positions you've moved out of the general fund?
The way I submitted it was there, there was positions in the general fund that got half or parts of their salary got moved to those other funds for the cities and towns.
Have you already shown that?
Yes.
So this is a thirty-four thousand dollar hit for the general fund? Put that in. That's what we're getting. Jeremy? Question? What are that?
Seven thirty-nine.
Seven thirty-nine.
All right, so just refresh everybody's memory. When we started this meeting, we are already less than available to give a four percent raise. And we're pushing close to, if you're on the flat rate side of the aisle, not being able to do fifteen.
We can't give fifteen?
We're not quite there, but we're, we're in tenth. Okay. That sounds, uh, that sounds great.
Not really. Dan, I'd like to.
Well, before we do that, um, and maybe this is what you're going to do. Let's go back to the, uh, let's go back to the prosecutor's budget.
It's probably.
Okay, so to refresh everybody's memory, I mean, this is a raise, this, this, the prosecutor's general fund increases, and of course, four D the same. These are, we're playing catch up here. And we're playing catch up, and I want to clear up the record because I heard so many different things. Other than isolated few raises last year, or actually this year, um, no proposal has ever been given to me as a councilman for increases across the board of the prosecutor's office. Now, I've been here thirteen years. Let me say that one more time because I, I want everyone to be clear. No proposal has ever been given to me for increases across the prosecutor's staff. Now, interestingly enough, I get calls from prosecutor's staff asking why not, but it hasn't. So we're playing catch up here. I want to clear that up because I wasn't at the meeting when things were said, and I want to clear that because I got to tell you, I got friends in the prosecutor's office, and I was offended by that. So, but we gave a few raises midstream this year. And I think, I wasn't at this meeting, I had a medical emergency I had to be at. But I conveyed to my fellow council members, I want to see the prosecutor's staff get a raise. And I just feel, I want to see the prosecutor's staff get a raise. Been a long time. We finally got something. Let's try to get them caught up. And that's where I was hoping we would identify, uh, last year, and I just didn't. So what we have in front of us now is, I, I think, an attempt to, uh, do that, to get the staff. Now, in this proposal, the three deputies that got raises last year, are they in this for raises again, Brian?
Okay. Yes. They need me to catch up with the entirety of the amount originally asked, and for two of them, it was chiseled down a little bit. So I'm back asking for the remainder of that at this time.
Okay, thank you. Jeremy, what were you going to say?
No, that, that's where I was going, Dan. You know, my, my biggest thing was there was only a few that were brought. I wish it was done in the vice session, and here we are, um, asking for the rest of them. So, you know, I, I'd hate to move on, have only given a few of them this year, and then now here we are, and we skipped the rest of them. So, you know, I'd like to look at the ones that were skipped over during, during the year. And I think, you identified those, I think, you as the administrative assistant?
So who did, who, who on this list, Brian, got a raise earlier this year?
Sure, Claire, Mike, Brandon.
You don't have to, you don't have to guess the names. Just go, so, just go down this list. So where do they fall in?
It could be. Senior deputy.
Yes, the senior deputy, the county court supervisor, and. Okay, senior deputy, the county court supervisor.
You said two was all Brian, is there a third?
There's a third.
There's three others.
And a senior county court deputy.
Oh. So we have, and so the three that got raises earlier in the year, you're asking for another three thousand, another five thousand, another fifteen hundred. Is that what I'm understanding? I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just saying, is that, do I have it right?
She's going to pull it up for us.
I don't think that's. Two of them were three.
You said you believe two of them are.
Two of them were three thousand, one was, one got the full amount requested.
Yeah, but I'm talking about what you're asking for now.
Oh.
I want to make sure that I have in my mind the right, the right position. So the, the senior deputy that got a raise before, you're asking for another three thousand. I'm not saying it's not warranted, I'm just saying that's what you're asking for. Court supervisor that got a raise, you're asking for another five thousand. And then, uh, the senior county court deputy, is that one that you're asking for a four thousand dollar increase or a fifteen hundred dollar increase?
Those were, those two positions were not one of the ones from March. The two, the three people got the mid-year raises this year.
Yeah. Who? Which, which one on this list? Senior deputy?
Senior deputy.
Yes. Which now you're asking for another three.
Correct.
All right, I want to make sure I have the right line. And then next?
It's on the screen.
That's the amended salary ordinance.
There we go. Okay. Senior deputy and county court supervisor.
That's the only two.
Should be one more.
You said there's three.
But that, that was the one, the third one was the one that got the entirety of what was requested. So I'm not increasing that.
So you're not asking for an increase to the third person? Just the two?
Correct.
So the third person's not listed?
Correct.
Okay.
Why did she think it was? Why did you think the third person was in there? Not that that's wrong, but you, you said Tammy, and then you pointed to something. I want to make sure we're on the same page.
She's part of three people, well, her salary on the sheet, she's part of three employees.
So this increase that you're showing on here, are you saying this is an increase that was already approved?
In March?
Yes.
Yeah, she was approved in March.
Well, I understand she was approved, but when you show the increase, you're.
I'm showing him, I'm looking at my sheet.
So Vicki?
Yes.
Go to your sheet. So she's saying that, so they're not asking for new money, it's just a, this is moved past March. Whatever people's salaries were after the mid-year raises, of those three people that got the increase, two, he's asking for an additional increase, the third one, he's not, correct?
Right, right.
All right. Thank you. And then, um.
And just so that you know, that was a percentage request at that time, so this fills in the top percentage.
All right, I, I get it, man. I understand what you were trying to do, and I understand what you're trying to, um. Okay, Jeremy, more? Do you understand what we just finished off with, that's your, two of those are ones you, raises were given already? If you're, if, listen, guys, if our thought, we have two, armed with our backdrop of limited funds, we have two paths we can follow here. Three paths. One is no raise, but that doesn't seem like to be a very nice path. The other one is, uh, give increases of some sort, special increases of some sort to everybody who didn't get one in March. Or give special increases to everyone, including the ones that already got one in March. So those are our, those are our potential, or I guess the fourth one is they all get the same raise that the rest of the county gets. The end. So what are you guys thinking?
Well, I, I don't know, you know, about. The ones that got raises in March, I'd really like, and I'm just one person here, I'd really like to see the ones that were left behind during that request to, you know, follow the path that he was, you know, going on, to try to adjust these people.
And Jeremy, when you go, when you're saying that, I guess I want to make sure I understand, are you talking about all the prosecutor's staff, or are you talking about the deputies?
Well, I guess the way I'm looking at it, it, it looks like maybe the deputies, Dan, you know, I'm looking at the fifteen hundred dollar increases on, on some of these. And Brian, you can jump in and, you know, um, were the, those fifteen hundred dollar increases, are you just looking to give raises? Period. So if, if we took those out, those fifteen hundred dollar requests, and look, let's, let's try to dig down and look at the ones that you really, that you took off, that you didn't include in March, that you're trying to bring up with the ones that were included. I mean, can you identify then, and we're looking at the, the, uh, the court supervisor, is that one? Or no, that one, that was already given a raise? What are we looking at then?
That was in March.
The, the, the third and fourth slots got a raise in March.
So what are we, are we looking at?
We're looking at Vicki's printout, so you're probably not.
I was looking at it on the paper.
So.
So the deputies that weren't included, Brian, the senior county court deputy, the request in four thousand dollars was out.
That was.
The, um.
What's on the screen now, is it helping?
What's on the screen was just your deferral. Because remember those increases were in the, but that was only part of their salaries, they also get it out of.
That was the last batch, and this batch, we're not asking to come out of that.
You're asking for it to come out of the general fund.
Well, sort of, sort of. now. Trying to best we can. But basically, we're trying to...
You're, you're asking who did get, you're asking who did get raises, the deputy?
Yes. I mean, that was your purpose.
Well, I want you to go through all the names.
No, I don't want, yeah, I don't want names.
I have the names, but it's kind of...
Yeah. So isn't it everybody but the ones you told us? Isn't it everybody but senior deputy and court supervisor?
Yes.
It is that drug coordinator, drug coordinator, both are all the ones, both are all the deputies.
We're looking at different sheets, Jeremy.
Yes.
So...
What's on the screen, I was helping.
What was on the screen was just your deferral.
Yes.
Because you remember those increases were in the, but that was only part of their salaries, they also get it out of the...
And that was the last batch. In this batch, we're not asking it to come out of that.
You're asking for it to come out of the general fund.
Well, sort of, sort of.
But we put it through the, the request out there.
Right.
So can you, can you put up the 1008 for us?
The general fund.
You want, do you want the general fund or do you want the deferral or what do you want?
Just...
Yeah, this is general fund.
We can't burn the deferral faster than we are.
We cannot. It's got to be, this increase, these are going to have to be, and I understand your position with the investigator squad around, I get it.
Right.
I was trying to find money in the budget I wasn't spending now.
Right.
So, it's either that money or it's new money. Because we can't absorb it, I mean, we can absorb it, but it'd go pretty darn, it's burning now. Trying to best we can. But basically, we're trying to...
You're, you're asking who did get raises, the deputy?
Yes. I mean, that was your purpose.
Well, I want you to go through all the names.
No, I don't want, yeah, I don't want names.
I have the names, but it's kind of...
Yeah. So isn't it everybody but the ones you told us? Isn't it everybody but senior deputy and court supervisor?
Yes.
It is that drug coordinator, drug coordinator, both are all the ones, both are all the deputies.
We're looking at different sheets, Jeremy.
Yes.
So...
What are your guys' thoughts on this?
Okay, so we're taking away, Jeremy, was your suggestion to take away the $1,500 because those were just...
Those were just asking for the increases, but we're going to, you know, let's look at that.
And we're going to address that at the end, so we're taking those out, the $1,500?
Yes.
Wait a minute, we had some of those for deputies, but some for staff.
Right. Here's what I want to do, take out anything administrative, leave in the deputies, take out the two deputies that already got raises and tell me what that looks like.
Did you get that?
Mike, just, yeah, hold on, sorry. Really briefly, I really, I'm pretty passionate about my administrative assistant giving the substantial...
Take out everything administrative, leave in the deputies except for the two deputies that already got raises. Take those raises down. And we'll come back and talk about that, Brian.
Senior deputy and court supervisor, correct. And then we did touch those two up there. And so we're looking from juvenile deputy down to county court deputy, portage, that's for black people, juvenile down to portage.
Right.
We're getting rid of the court managers as well?
Do I need to, no?
Okay.
Can you tell?
So, we're just doing... Is it four? 15,000.
We have two of us saying 15,000.
15,000 is the nut then, and that's, as I said, everything administrative out, leaving in the deputies except for the two that got raises are right, in March. Right, correct? That's 15,000, okay?
18,000.
No, it's more than that. I've got 5,54, 15, 15, 15, 15, so 3,000, 4,500, 6,000, 10,000, I have 20,000 on the notes.
I want to make sure our auditor is right on the page. So tell me where we're off. You're obviously missing something.
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's try this again.
Sure, how about if we look at our list? Because there's different titles. Those were the ones we thought were getting the raises.
I mean, Vicki, part of the, part of the increase though, we have built in already because of the raise we gave midstream, right? So the budget increased by three face because of the raises they gave in March.
Right.
So, we already had an increase to the budget from last year. So I'm asking what the additional, well, I guess I want to know all told.
Are we talking six people? Eight people, so we're missing two.
Yeah, and I think it's because there's part of one bulk of people, $1,000.
Senior court deputies?
None of these people do any work for 4D.
So we asking more?
Well, no, I mean, that's another story, there's those, I talked about two, but no. It used to be that you could do that.
Right, I know. They took all the fun out of it. Are we, are we, are we close? You came up with 20, one of you came up with 15, the other one said 18.
18, yeah.
We gave you 16,000 and none of the thing was.
We need to really identify which one.
Hold on, it's all, it'll come. Wait for it, man. Wait for it. Vicki, have we got it? Because we're, I'm working off the sheet you gave us, Vicki, so...
Yeah, so are we. And it's not...
It's not, Jeremy?
It's not matching yours.
Now, we're 21,5?
Yeah.
Okay, the 21, 1,500 of that, so we're at the 20, but we came up with, but 15 is coming out of the pretrial, that we talked, first thing in the meeting.
Right.
That's not just, that's not...
All right, so just tell me, so we got this, the general...
21, 22, 21, 5.
All right, I can try this a different way, guys. Let me just, 4, 5, 500, 6,000, 9,000, 15, yeah, I mean, that's all right. 4, 7, 12, 15, I have 15.
How did the Cubs game start?
It started at 3:00.
5:00? Who's winning?
Washington.
Okay, Vicki, are we, are we...
Right. Eight people, right? Yes, so it's 20,000. And then 15 gets out of the pretrial.
Okay, so to hit to the general fund, if we do exactly what I just asked to do, is how much?
20,000.
And plus FICAN per increases? How much?
7,15, 301.
Show of hands of anybody who understands what you're...
That's the remainder of our...
That's the remainder of our money.
Say that again, 7,15, 301? My question to you was, what's the hit to the general fund with FICAN per?
Oh.
Okay, thank you. Wow.
23?
Yeah, so, because that's what we're voting on. So, guys, we gotta, we gotta get the deputies up a little bit here. We gotta do it.
Absolutely.
I mean, that was funny, did it, did it midstream here, left...
All right, so, let's identify the general fund prosecutor then. You've heard the increase, can I get a motion?
Some votes?
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, now we're going to come back to the other ones with the employee raises. 4D, let's go back down to that one. I would like to make a suggestion, if we do the same thing, let's just hit the two, I mean, I know it's not general fund, but we're on, we're on a roll here. Hit the two deputy prosecutor increase requests, what we just did on the general fund one, get that off the table and we can come back to the other ones with the employees. Anybody got a problem with that?
No. No, I guess a good plan.
So, can I get a motion?
Who's going to get it? Get the AIGA first?
I think it's something like 9,000, maybe? I'm smart, that one. It's not, I'm sorry, dude.
I'm just narrowing it down, man.
It's one of those, man. The number's 9,000, we got a motion?
Second.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that one doesn't do anything to the general fund, okay, Brian, we'll come back to the others. Okay. Now, what's our number, 7,15 and change? 7,15, 3?
Yes.
Now, I want to go back to, what was our number for, if we gave a 4% raise? 800 and something?
Yeah, 8,29, 490.
And, a $1,500 raise?
Yes.
So the 7,26?
7,55.
7,55.
So, we've got to find some money to make either one of those work, if we wanted to do that, before we get to the rest of this. So, what do you want to do next?
Yeah?
We've got a couple other small ones, we want to hit the one-offs real quick? We've got a treasurer, extension and recorder? Yes. Vicki, you started to say something.
Yeah. When you asked me what the cost would be, that's what we calculated before this meeting. So the cost would be slightly lower because of the raises that we're giving right now. But let's just stick with them because that's, that's giving us a little bit of a cushion.
Okay.
Because we can't, we could try to deduct it, but it would take some time.
Okay.
That's what we're going to do when we go through everything and find some of that.
You want to hit the big fish in the pond or you want to do the other one-offs here?
Let's just, let's go after it.
Let's, uh... I understand that that's probably going to be a big conversation and the treasurer, extension office and recorder office are going to be sitting here for a long time. Treasurer, come on up. So you've asked for some raises here, Michelle. A couple of them seem to be spot on with what we were thinking anyway, but then there's three that are not, or a shade higher. So are these just, can I ask the question, are these just, you're trying to get your staff up in pay or is there some restructuring of your office that you're, you know, doing away with staff?
Both. I'm eliminating the one, first deputy, at 39, 635.
Okay. Now Vicki?
Yes.
She says she's eliminating the first deputy as part of her restructuring. So when you, when you figured out the number for me, is that deputy's money out then?
Uh, yes. Yeah.
And you didn't put anything back in?
No.
Like we did with the other ones?
Uh-uh.
No. That's too bad, I was hoping you were telling me you put it back in. Because she's eliminating a position to create raises.
Okay.
All right.
We could put it back in.
So, when you gave me, so go ahead, go ahead, Michelle, I'm sorry. Finish what you're saying.
Oh, I was just going to say, we're, yeah, getting rid of that salary and then taking part of that to provide raises for the other. And you restructured your department with more cross-training and...
Yeah.
Do you all understand that? She, she struck a line through one of these positions and sprinkled some of the money around to try to re-cross train and redo her office, which is exactly what we asked people to do.
Yes, we embraced it.
What do you want to do with the treasurer?
Well, more than hopefully...
You're going to go more than that?
No, actually...
You're on the wing, you're on the wing side here, I've got a feeling.
The hourly, I had put it from 5 to 20, I'd actually like to change that down to 10. So go from 5,000 to 10,000, so actually...
So Vicki, on her, on your, on our general fund hit, did you have the treasurers hourly up?
Yes, because that's as submitted. So we can reduce that, what, to 10, you said? Okay.
All right, so that picks us up. So you had the 20,000 in our increase hit, right?
Yes.
So with that hourly down to 10, what do her restructuring raises do to her budget? It almost is a wash.
Well, right, it's a reduction.
Reduction.
Can I get a motion?
Wait a minute.
15,198.
Right.
Motion to second, hourly down to 10. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, have a good night. Extension office, come on down. Hey, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Hold on a second. No.
No?
I wouldn't go that direction. If we need to.
I think we need to.
Not just yet, yes. I'm hoping that can't work yet.
I'm too much already, but okay.
Because you know what's going to happen then? The number's going to get...
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. Um, we finish up with the plugging of the gap. All right, so with an extension, what's another $5,000? 2,500 bucks for each, did not specify. Go ahead.
2,500 for each, yes. I'm just trying to catch them up.
Okay. So, is there any place in your budget you can find that money?
Um, we do have a little bit of money, we have about $1,000 in our maintenance that is probably overfunded by about $1,000.
So maintenance is 1,700, you're saying could be 700?
Um...
Is that right? Doesn't seem like much maintenance.
No, it's clear, yeah.
What's your, why is your contractual services 139, 960 up to 142, 065?
Um...
Anything that can be adjusted or is that hard line?
No, that's hard line.
All right. And your hourly, you need 27,726?
Um, we could probably do with 1,000 less than that if you wanted to transfer that over.
Okay, so, Vicki, stay with me here. Something on her budget.
Yeah, we could transfer 1,000 out of part time.
So we took her, we took her hourly down, how's your hourly look right now?
We will use every dollar this year.
Will you?
And last year we had to ask for an additional of 300 at the end of the year.
Okay.
So we're trying to...
All right, forget it then. So, what you think you can do without 1,000?
I think I could have...
So if you took her hourly down to 26, 726, and you're saying you can take your maintenance So, maintenance is seventeen hundred, you're saying could be seven hundred?
Um...
Is that right? Doesn't seem like much maintenance. What's your, why is your contractual services one thirty-nine, nine sixty up to one forty-two, oh six five?
Um...
Anything that can be adjusted, or is that hard line?
No, that's hard line.
Alright, and your hourly, you need twenty-seven thousand, seven twenty-six?
Um, we could probably do with a thousand less than that, if you wanted to transfer that over.
Okay, so, Vicky, stay with me here. Something on her budget.
Yeah, we could transfer a thousand out of part-time.
So, we took her, we took her hourly down, how's your hourly look right now?
We will use every dollar this year.
Will you?
And last year, we had to ask for an additional of three hundred at the end of the year.
Okay.
So, we're trying to...
Forget it, then. So, what you think you can do without a thousand?
I think I could.
So, if you took her hourly down to twenty-six, seven twenty-six, and you're saying you can take your maintenance agreements down to seventeen hundred?
You know, I was thinking that our maintenance was twenty-four hundred. So, I don't know that we can...
Well, you found a thousand dollars, that's a five hundred dollar each, which is a whole lot less than we were looking at, anyway.
So, I'm not sure how much we could take out of maintenance, maybe five hundred. Um, because I was thinking that we had more in there than what that shows.
Now, this, this budget doesn't have a whole lot of it that we can whack at.
We, yeah, we have kept, kept, kept for a while.
What do you guys want to do here? So, she's asking for raises for a couple of folks, we have two choices here, she's found us a thousand dollars out of hourly, but she's still four thousand shy of the load. There's a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second. Discussion?
Well, why are we not doing what we've been doing consistently, what we did to prosecutors and lower this twenty-five hundred down, include that in the end-all, please?
That was why I was gonna vote no.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Okay, um... Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
No.
Uh, councilmember Revis?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Witten?
No.
No. And councilmember Conover?
No.
Okay, so, four noes, two ayes.
Put the thousand back into hourly.
I'm sorry.
What we'll do is, we'll come back to this when we talk about other raises, we might be able to find your most of that, quite frankly. Yeah. I mean, if we, if we give everybody a thousand, fifteen, whatever it ends up being, if you got another thousand in there, we can carve it out.
Okay. Great.
Recorder? Say, John?
Good evening.
Alright. So, in this budget, um, you're asking obviously for a series of raises down the line. Comes up to about nineteen thousand, three sixty-five, not counting FICA and PERF. Do you have, are we, are we looking for money that's otherwise in your budget, John, or in your restructure? Or are we looking for just, you're asking for a raise, raises?
Well, we restructured the office last year somewhat. Actually, it started in two thousand twelve.
Right.
We, uh, one of the things we did was, we re-engineered the workflow process by cross-training everyone at that time. There was no, there was some cross-training, there was some evident. But, for example, back then, only one person in the office did any scanning of documents. Now, everybody can do scanning, we've done e-recording, we've done other things that we brought into the program.
Right.
A lot of that has incorporated new technology skill sets that have been required by our staff. I did not ask for a raise at that time, because, you know, well, historically, we were told not to. I mean, there was, there was, there were budget issues, we, we know that. Well, there were, there were issues going on that had been resolved. I'm asking for these raises primarily for two reasons. One is because of the new skill set that our employees require. But, secondly, also because it's just, I believe it's just an equitable request based on the skill set that our people have in comparison to other people who do like work in other offices, not only just in, in other counties, but in other counties.
Do you have other money in your budget that can be used to deal with this?
Talking about general fund money?
Yes.
The only money we take out of the general fund is salaries. And, of course, the benefits.
How, and I think you said your non-general fund fund was not gonna last forever.
Well, when we were, prior to last year, it would've probably dried up by the end of next year, at the rate we're going. And I'm sure the county auditor can, can concur with that.
Yeah.
One big change now is, the fund is building up again. Thanks to the county council's help last year. Another thing is, we have a fee increase that occurred for recording fees. Senate Bill five oh five was passed, it's also, it's increased the amount of money coming into the general fund somewhat on all recorded documents. It's also helping our perpetuation fund. So, uh, that's been very beneficial this year and will be for, hopefully, for many years.
So, okay. Um, I, we can, one thing I would, understanding what's been the discussion this evening, I would, I mean, the numbers I gave you could be reduced somewhat. I mean, I'd be happy to negotiate that down some, if possible. Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, I mean...
I understand.
You know, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm bending me asking for it, I mean, you know, I know that. But, um, I'm, I'd be happy to do that. I, but I am very adamant, Dan, that, uh, I think our ladies, I mean, our staff needs raises.
Okay.
And I am asking for a raise personally, because in the past, the recorder didn't ask for raises.
Right.
In fact, sometimes there were years when it was very lean, when the recorder didn't ask for raises and gave it to the staff, which I think was very, very admirable. But now, I'm looking, not just, it's for my benefit, but also, I'm trying to raise salary level for future recorders, too.
Gotcha.
It may sound overly noble, but it's just a fact.
And I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna go after elected officials at the end, you know, salary. So, um, so with respect to the one, two, three, four deputies, we can approach this one of two ways. One is, we can attack these when we attack the raises and see what that ends up being for them. Or, we can, um, deal with these raises now. Are, are, John, are you saying that, are there any funds available in your non-general fund that could support these raises?
As far as like a stip end, you mean, like an additional kind of?
Yeah, you know, sometimes we carve out and give some of the salaries out of, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, and I I am so sincere, I'm so adamant about trying to help our people, that would be a definite option. I don't think it would, I do not think, based on how the perpetuation fund has been thriving, really.
Yeah.
It's been doing very well, and I perceive it will in the future.
Yeah.
Uh, that, um, I think this would not be a major hit to it if we, if we did that, I'd be willing, I'd be more happy to...
You understand, guys, that, uh, you know, hit the, hit the perpetuation fund for this? Vicky, well, how's that fund looking right now?
Okay, so, the cash balance right now is two fifty-one, seven oh five.
Where'd we start the year at? So, so, this, that fund's strong. Okay. So, you guys wanna deal with this now, or later?
That's something he's willing to take on.
Well, I mean, I'm, well, something I'm willing to take on, I'll be honest. I mean, quite bluntly, I am very willing to take it on, because I just feel that, that I am very desolate, we have to help our people, not at all.
What do you guys wanna do here? I think we should oughta just...
Are we leaving John in, or out?
No, I think we should come back and deal with him with elected officials.
Okay.
Just because we, I wanna look at those.
Okay.
And then the balance coming out of the perpetuation fund?
Yes.
No, I motioned that we accept that.
Vicky?
Question, question?
Yeah.
FICA and PERF?
It'll add to the general, right?
Unless, can that come out of the...
Should it come out of the general fund, or do, uh, are we talking about the perpetuation?
I mean, pretty good, I know.
We're not taking any of the benefits out of that, I mean...
Let's just assume that we did.
That we did.
Sounds like... I'm just trying to keep that general fund hit, you gotta understand, I mean, we're, we're against it.
So, fifteen, nine thirty-five, that's the...
How much?
Uh, fifteen thousand, nine thirty-four is the increase to the perpetuation fund.
Alright.
Hold on, just one sec, let me get you the, FICA's twelve eight, twelve nineteen? Seventeen eighty-four?
What's the hit? Give me the big number.
Depends on who can do it. About nineteen thousand, out of the perpetuation fund.
Is that agreeable, John? Can we do that for now?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's my mo, my motion, my motion that we accept nineteen thousand.
Motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks for being flexible.
Alright, so, we've gotten the, uh, we've knocked off a few of the... Yeah. Madam Auditor?
Yes.
Let's talk about your raises.
Oh, here, okay.
I guess you guys wanna vote, you guys wanna get into the jail and sheriff now?
You wanna sit through this? You gotta stay here, anyway.
I gotta stay here, anyway. Do you want me up there?
No, hold on a minute. What do you guys wanna do?
We might as well visit the sheriff. Visit, uh...
Alright. Okay, Vicky, what do we have left with general fund? What do we have left?
Okay, seven oh seven, two thirty-eight.
Okay, guys. We got two, we got two things going on here. Three things, really, with additional positions, but we've got some merit increase requests?
Yes.
And we've got, um, jail increase requests. And I've had lots and lots and lots of conversations about those two, both with the sheriff and with fellow council members, and I, I'm not entirely sure that we're all on the same sheet. So, I think we oughta probably talk it through. What do you wanna tackle first, Sheriff? Jail or Sheriff, merit?
Um, merit.
So, you guys just get to the merit? So, it looks like you're asking for, um, a series of raises here now. When I, when I started, uh, to look at these, I was thinking in terms, and others strongly disagreed with me, but, or just disagreed with me. I was looking at percentage raises across the board and how far off your request was from what, you know, I was hoping to see happen. And then others have flat raises in mind, and they can make that same analysis for themselves. And it doesn't sound like we're horribly far off, however, we're, we're a little, we're a little bit off.
Can I make a proposal?
You can.
Um, just listening to everything you're saying here, you gave us a guy on merit, which is, obviously, hasn't happened in over a decade. I know we're adamantly against flat across-the-board raises. We know five percent's probably a little, outreaching, um, you know, from what you, what you got left. If, if, if I could make a proposal of giving, of asking for three and a half percent for the merit and plus the guy, um, we'd be, we'd be really happy with that.
So, you're saying maybe three and a half percent across, alright. Um, I'm gonna do some math here, but, uh, guys, what are your... And I think that, that, I think honestly, Sheriff, it's gonna come down to, um, you know, as we deal with the jail and the merit, there may not be enough money to give, you know, a lot of big raises across the board. We may have to figure something that's good for everybody. I know that there's some concern amongst some of the council members that they wanted to start with giving the jail staff a raise, um, and then sort of moving, uh, back into the merit. Others, uh, wanted to start with the merit, get the merit guys an increase, and then see what we can do for the jail. Uh, there's a couple of things working here. One is, candidly, our merit's underpaid, of course, our jail is too, you know, you're talking to an ex-cop, so, my heart's, you know, where it is. And, so I want us to stay competitive. I want us, our department to be competitive. I want our department to be the one that the folks wanna come to and not leave because of money constraints. So, that's important. I know that there was some talk that we just gave a nice size raise to the, uh, merit. But, in my mind, that was a catch-up, and I don't wanna play catch-up again in four, five, six years. I wanna stay competitive, so we don't have to deal with this, you know? I don't want guys, women, men in uniform suffering out there, because we're not given raises, um, cost of living increases. So, that's all going, that's all at play here. So, we wanna make sure that we identify those things and all those things that I said of the merit and instead of the jailers. Again, I'm an old road dog, so, that's where my mind is, at least my experience is. So, maybe what we should do is we're, so you're, I mean, we've talked at times of a flat raise and, and a percentage raise. So, like, for example, a, a first-class patrolman, what, I mean, how far off, what's a, what's a three and a half percent raise on a first-class patrolman's salary?
Like twenty-one hundred bucks, isn't it?
Yeah.
First class, yeah.
Alright.
Nineteen hundred dollars, right?
Okay. I'm sorry, I have a different number, hold on. Great. Three and a half?
One, one thing, one, one thing's
Yes, three and a half.
clear. I mean, one thing is just clear.
Eighteen eighty-one.
We, we can't, we can't give the requested increases to merit, jail and restructuring, because then we're out of money, and we do that to the detriment of everybody else working for the county. So, we know that we can't do that out of the chute. But we can do, we, we wanna do the most that we can. We wanna, we wanna, we wanna put the money where we can, you know, help your departments out as much as we can. Because honestly, those three, those three things are, that would just about do it for what's left, for the money, are close. I mean, here's, can I say one more? Yeah, you can, Sheriff.
You got, um, we, we face the same old adage, do you give us a man, or do we, we get a raise? So, we've always, when, if and when that possibility comes up, you've already approved a guy, which is around fifty-five thousand dollars and maybe more with insurance. I mean, I'm, I'm in a position where I'll give you the guy back, give me the six... What we asked for originally on the merit side was five percent, was a little less than two hundred thousand. So, if you, if we gave back the, the, the man, which we don't wanna do, but the most, I think I'm trying to stress how important it is to get the, a percentage raise for the merit guys. And we gotta do one thing at a time. But, and now you're talking, now you're talking the difference of maybe a little over a hundred thousand dollars, and then the merit's taken care of.
Yeah, but those are two, I, I understand what you're saying.
Why not?
Sheriff, and I
But that's gonna be...
I understand where they're coming from with that. But I, I mean, if you listen to the conversations that we, we've had outside this, of our, of this meeting, we want you to have another officer on the street. We, we want you to increase the size of your department. We, you know, and we talk about the sheriff's department hasn't increased guys, again, in, in eight years, no one asks.
I mean, there's no question about it.
So, we gotta do it, you know, and you're asking, and we wanna do it, because it's a public safety issue.
But if you don't give us the raises, we're gonna be back the same way, same place where we are before. We, we had twenty-five guys apply for our department last year, we used to have a hundred and fifty. So, it's important that we, we get, you know, it's the same, what we argue, you know, we, we put the proposal together, you know, we're just, let's talk facts here, you know, we've got, um, I've got five guys assigned to drug, the drug drug units because of our heroin epidemic and opiate problems. So, we're not complaining about that, it's something that has to be done, but it's always like, we're given, we're given, we're given. The one thing that we, I, I have to fight for is, is the, is a percentage raise for, for the merit guys. I mean, it just, uh, what's killed us over the years is giving, um, a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars across the board. But that just, that's why we, we've always been behind. Again, we stay behind.
I'm, I'm all for, listen, I'm all, I, I wanna get your guys raised. I just said, I want you guys to get competitive and stay competitive. There's no question about that. I know most of your guys, and, and I, they're, they do a great job. A lot of them are my friends. I wanna, I wanna see them get increases.
Dan, they're all Latin.
But you just said, you just said that, we'll get to that. Well, you just said that these guys I have assigned to other things, that almost begs the question of, why aren't you giving me another guy? I'm assigning these five people here, I, that almost tells me, man, I really need another guy.
There's no question I need another guy, but, but we've argued this along many times. If you give me the three and a half percent, which is less than what I'm asking, and one guy, then we'd be very happy. And I, apparently, there's no movement with you guys, but that's what we want.
We, we have to ask, too, Sheriff, I mean, we, we've asked everybody that's come before us, is, is there any other resource for funding? Is there anything?
Funding, I fund because of the federal prisoners that I bring in.
I know, we get money from these guys.
I mean, I fund, I fund your general, your general budget is, I fund that.
We, we understand that.
Well, that's pretty good, I mean, no one's, no one's got up here and said what they fund here. I fund a, a large part of the opportunity buzz in town.
It's a fair question, and we ask everyone.
I know, I'm just saying, it's not...
I think what, I think what Councilman Larson is asking you, Dave, is is there any other place or any additional funding that you have available that could fund some of these raises? I guess that's what he's asking you. No one's questioning what you're funding already.
We've hit, well, we've got...
Two seventeen? The federal money?
The two seventeen, general fund.
Everything else in the general fund in the sheriff is pretty much used up, you know, all these other, all these other things, the ammunition. You know, I mean, we don't have a lot in there that, you know, the other supplies covers us, anything and everything. We never have enough, you know, it pays for everything else besides what's in these line items, maintenance and all of that. I don't, I don't see anything that I can take out of there.
So, that's where you're headed? You need to head in another direction, because it won't work. Tough. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, it seems like the sheriff is in line with what our general thought is on the raises across the board. Am I making that assumption?
Well...
And you and I have talked about that before? And you and I have talked about that before.
Yeah, so if he's, are you talking about the 3.5 or what he's asking for?
Yeah, the 3.5.
I mean, I, guys, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just.
That's where, that's where we were close to the percentages.
But do you understand that if by some weirdness we gave everybody a 4% raise, they're getting less?
Right.
That we can't do that?
I don't think by any weirdness, if you're giving anybody a 4% raise, if you're, you know, looking at these numbers here, we're gonna be hard pressed to give them a 3%.
Right.
Commissioner Berix, was that you that threw out? I would like to hear your thoughts, you said exactly?
Yeah.
So you don't think we should give the sheriff's deputies an increase?
My only question is whether or not you, that county, whether or not county government can afford.
There you go.
And I just, I was agreeing with Councilman.
I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
So.
If we give a percentage raise, the one that, looking at now, that's sustainable is 3%.
Right.
From what we've got left.
Well. That's no good.
Well, you didn't like my other solutions.
It's not that I don't like it, it's that I don't think we can do it.
Well, we've got two of us.
Ask? I mean, here's the problem, we keep, we keep digging into that foundation, what happens in a bad year? And second of all, we would have to change that resolution and that requires a foundation vote. So it would require commissioners in the council getting together, having a quick meeting, and what if it didn't fly? And we tell everybody we was just kidding about that raise?
We can tell people we try.
All right, what other thoughts you have?
Go ahead Sylvia.
Didn't Vicki say they, she needs to have the figures today?
We gotta get it, we gotta, well, we gotta get it figured out tonight, we do. We can't, we can't let it go beyond tonight. She needs the numbers, we gotta get, we have to give her time to get it right, we have to review all the numbers. So, we haven't, yeah, what's, what would a, Vicki, what would a, if we, just for fun, do a 3.5% at merit? Tell me what that number comes up to, I'm not.
Can we just clarify? Does that include the second class and the probationary people? Did we go all the way down to that or just the first class?
No, for the, for the percentage? I did everyone.
Everyone, okay. And does that, does that include the sheriff?
No, we'll come and get him at the, at the, to electorships.
I have 120, I have 1, 125,000 would be the increase.
Okay. Y'all got that?
Yeah, that includes perp and everything.
Yeah, does that include perp and flakker, no?
No.
Most of them are merit, so there is.
There'd be no perp.
Oh, there's no perp, yeah, the sheriff's pension, yeah. That's not so bad. You know. Reduce the insurance to a couple hundred thousand. If we run short, we gotta.
Well, we've got.
I mean, we could do it. All right, so have that number in the back of your mind, let's go to the jail. Okay. So you have two parts of the jail, Dave, you've got Sheriff, you've got some additional staff, and you've got requested increases. And those two numbers together are pushing almost four?
We're also eliminating one position.
Yeah, I took that out. 3580, so maybe a little over three. Be 30?
37.
So what is your pleasure with the jail, guys? We've had a lot of talks about the jail and the jailers and, do you have a thought on this? Sheriff, do you have enough proposal on this one, other than what's in front of us?
I mean, you went through our PowerPoint, you know what we do, you know the li, you know what we save really the county in liability on because of how we do what we do. I guess it just boils down to, we've got, you know, we're asking for three additional officers, we're asking for lieutenant, which you already have in the budget, and we're asking for program director.
So are we, do we have a, sorry, Councilman Jessen's asking me how things are going. You don't wanna see my response. So we had that conversation about, with the merit, about, hey, I would like to have new people, but raises are most important. Is that true of the jail?
I think what's, I think, what do I, what we need is the first, the restructuring, we need to have the program director in there, we need to have the lieutenant in there, and whatever you could, if you can't give me the three people, if you could give me whatever you could give me would be a help.
So the program director?
Yes.
Right, and of course the, the other lieutenant, because you eliminated the.
Right, and then whatever you could give me would be, would be a tremendous help.
Well, I'm gonna just say this out loud, last year when we were able to do the merit officers, you said, and next coming down the pike will be the jailers. And looking over what our jailers make versus other communities our side, it's just incredible to me. We have secretaries in this building that are making more than, than our jailers. And this is the first time in my recollection, and I've been on and off here many years, that you've asked, that anybody's asked to restructure the jail. We've always been throwing more bodies at you.
No question about it.
Okay, on that thought, we're gonna take about a five minute break. I'm gonna check the numbers, I have an idea.
Will we still be kicking on Friday?
Yeah.
Oh wait, we have a big time and attendance meeting beginning tomorrow morning. And it affects your department's time and attendance, they're gonna start setting it up. Yeah, it's a big meeting.
When I was a kid, when I was a kid, I visited it.
Yeah, we all did.
It was confusing Sheriff. That's because it's listed differently, yeah, and I think some titles got changed also. But we'll, we'll work, we'll double-check everything with you. Yeah. More papers, you know? Yes, yes. Okay. No Sheriff. Yeah.
I just like.
Sheriff. You really, really hurt me. You really hurt me. So, here we go. I understand, I understand, I'm not disagreeing with you guys, but we gotta. I mean, do you see that?
Yeah, he did.
All right, okay. Vicki? I wanna, before we go any further on this, I wanna ask, there's a, one other, I wanted to talk about one or two of the one-off, so Sheriff, if you could just give us a second, I wanna, I want the commissioners to come up here wherever they are. While Vicki's doing those adjustments to the numbers that I asked her to do. You have a couple of requests, administrative assistant and administrative, executive benefits administrator. I know you guys did some things in your budget, you did away with some positions too?
Yeah, we gave one, we proposed having one less position and I believe our total salary line item in this, in the general fund is lower than it was last year.
Y'all understand that?
Yep.
We good with that?
Motion accepted.
All in favor, signify.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Want to get that out of the way? All right.
Thank you Dave.
Now, I think that, that's all I wanted to address on that one. So Vicki, with the, with, with the changes that I told you just to make, what is our new number?
We're without the sheriff.
He's, yeah, without the sheriff.
Well.
Without the sheriff's increase, yeah.
Without the sheriff's increases, because you guys haven't really.
We haven't dealt with that yet, just give us the new number before we.
This is nine, you said, yesterday I just said.
Yeah, that's not right.
No.
Remember that little change that one you made?
Yeah. 946, 473.
And that includes the new, we've already got the new sheriff's deputy in there, right?
That's the sheriff's deputy, but none of the, none of the sheriff raises.
That includes the perp and everything, the whole follow-up.
Let's just say another.
That does not include merit raises? No.
No, no, we haven't done that yet, we're still working our way back.
Do you think?
Do you think, that's right. Bringing love and sunshine. Honor, you've got some requested raises.
Yes. Should I come up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're not, on a couple of these, you're not horribly off of what I was thinking, but you are, a little bit.
Okay, well, keep in mind, I cut my general fund budget even with the special raises requested.
But you're already showing that cut, right?
Uh, yes, I am.
So you guys understand, she cut her general fund to make room for these?
Yep.
How do you guys feel about that?
Motion accepted.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Vicki, you can go back to your seat.
Thanks, Vic.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, President.
Your continued, your continued efforts will not go unnoticed.
You can hit it.
Uh, IT, ITS. Get that out of the way and then we're gonna finish up with Sheriff from jail. Oh, and the animal shelter too. Okay, so lots of raise requests in here.
I sent you some leads here previously of the national average salaries and what the state Indiana salaries are.
Yep.
And from that, fifty-six thousand, five hundred that my system administrators make is very, very low. I have four engineers on staff. We maintain sixty offices at sixteen different sites in Porter County. We have approximately four hundred and sixty users that these four guys have to maintain. So we have a lot of work to do. We just got, we just approved another guy from my department that will be stationed at nine-one-one full-time. At sixty-five thousand. So it's not gonna look real good for me if I go back and hire a guy at sixty-five thousand and he'll pay my people fifty-six thousand.
Sheriff, you're asking us to go back and reduce his?
No, I'm asking you to increase my, my engineers.
Okay. So you're, you, this isn't really a restructure, you're just sort of asking for increases 'cause you wanna get these guys up?
Right.
Which isn't a bad thing, but some of these raises are fairly large, so I wanted to make sure I understood. Okay. What you guys, let's run this.
Well, going back to what you just said, um, we set a salary at sixty-five thousand. And some of your engineers are making fifty-six, three of them are.
Right.
I'd, I'd like to set those at sixty-five, so they're kind of in pair with what we just did earlier tonight.
Okay.
And my network engineer makes, I think, sixty-one thousand. What I'd like to do is pay them all the same amount, they all do the same type of work.
Okay.
Okay, so if, just for fun, Vicki, increase the engineers to sixty-five thousand. What's that? And, and not the others. Not the director, not the system, well, not the systems. You have one systems engineer that's thirty-six-five-ish, and not that one.
Okay, not that one.
What does that do?
Not the director, not the systems engineer, right?
Yeah.
I think that was what Karen just said.
Okay. No, those, those, um, well, they're four positions now, just that a senior network engineer could reduce those salaries to sixty-five thousand.
Forty-three, nine, twenty-seven, if we just take off the...
So what's that number?
Increase.
Increase, you might increase.
And decrease the raise.
That's okay, we're with you, it's been a long night.
This is right, okay. Yes, sorry, so this is twenty-nine thousand? Yeah, twenty-nine thousand, just for the salaries and the site and turf, so the total increase is thirty-four thousand, four sixty-seven.
On those four, on those four.
Pardon me?
On those four.
Just those four, yes.
Hold on a minute. Okay, what's, uh... Is that what you guys wanna do?
I don't see how we can.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
So the only changes we're making are to those four?
Yeah.
And everything else is maintained?
Yeah, we can go back when we deal with raises, they may end up okay anyway, but not necessarily what you want, but... All right, all in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Vicki, give me the new general fund number.
The availability, the availability is eight eighty-five eighty-six.
Thought it was nine forty-six.
We just did these.
No, that's only thirty.
Yeah, it's only thirty.
How'd it get, what happened? We were at nine, we were at nine forty-six, four seventy-three and...
Yeah. We approved the auditors though, right?
Oh, you'd already taken out your ones that you removed?
Yeah.
Okay, what was our... I hope some dreams are starting to dry up here. Vicki, tell me again what, what the four percent was, eight what?
Eight twenty-nine, four ninety. Uh, we're, we're actually working, got a new program going here. And we're backing out the special raises, so at four percent, we're at seven fifty-eight, four seventy-three right now.
All right.
Roughly.
All right, that's cool, so we got that, we'll revisit these other ones when we do the raises, so let's take a look and see where we're... Animal shelter, you hear?
Can I bring one thing up?
Yeah.
In our second hearing, I had twenty-five thousand dollars in for overtime. And you wanted to find out what the employee may have said about how people get no behind.
Yeah. Hold on a minute.
I'd like to just make an proposal. I mean, I'll drop this because I made a mistake on my Form 144.
Sure.
On the front page, I had thirteen thousand dollars in there for hourly.
Yes.
I neglected to carry it over to the second page.
Okay. It's kinda unfortunate. Uh... So... Put that in.
Right.
So Vicki?
Let's put it in.
We were hoping you were gonna give us good news.
Yeah. That's not good news.
Okay.
Okay, eight sixty-six, five eighty-six.
Okay. We're getting painfully down. Okay, thanks, I appreciate it. Animal shelter.
You're right.
You're coming into rough waters.
I see that.
It's great to be at the end.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, sometimes it's terrible even at the beginning. See a lot of them. It's never a good time to be here. All right, so... Lay it on us.
Okay, um, we restructured because of the new shelter. Um, we, the new person is great, but I did wanna bring somewhat people up in line with where we should be. Um, and what we did though is we took half of the salaries and put them into our other fund where the municipalities are paying us money. So we've actually reduced our salary dollar amount in the general fund and moved a lot of that over to our municipality fees funds for both the animal control and the animal shelter.
Okay.
So we're actually taking less money out of the general fund for salaries.
Some of these are pretty healthy increases, it looks like. I mean, there's some that are like twenty-five percent almost. Thirty percent. Am I wrong, twenty-two thousand to thirty?
Yes.
I mean, that's a, that's a huge, I get it, but I also get it. That's a big, that's a big increase.
I'm willing to negotiate.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, they are doing a lot of additional work with the new shelters, a lot more animals.
And we want that shelter to be a success, we've invested a lot of time, effort, and money to build in that bank.
Right.
And we want it to be a successful venture.
And that's why I did the restructuring, to try and get more people out there to help the public and that kinda thing. Um, and that's why these increases are where they're at.
There's a lot more activity in the new shelter, which is what we wanted.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and, um... All right. What do you guys wanna do here? I, I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can take this, I, I don't know that we can give thirty percent raises. I just don't know if we can do that. What do you guys wanna do here?
Tony said she was willing to negotiate, what's fair, Tony? Given what you've set through here tonight, what do you...
That's a tough one. Um, I, I guess the biggest issue are the, the twenty-two to the, to the thirty. I mean, I, it, we can... These two, for twenty-two, yeah.
I mean, you understand the confusion as we look at that 144. They were twenty-two in the general fund, now they're fifteen apiece in the general fund.
Right.
So...
But their proposal reduces the amount to the general fund, correct? And that, Vicki, you already showed that.
Even with the raises, it reduces the amount to the general fund.
Yep.
So Vicki, I'm gonna ask that question again.
How about if we bring up that 144?
I, I get what you're doing, and it's good, I'm just trying to make sure that we keep our numbers straight.
Yeah, I get it.
You're right, just if we look at the salaries, because of how they're moving the positions around, we are seeing a decrease in the salary line item.
So when you gave me our general fund number, it showed the reduction to the general fund, but now we're gonna put it back in, correct? I mean, that's good, it's kinda what we wanna do, but I mean, I wanna make sure our, our numbers are straight. So if we all said, yeah, this is great, we're talking thirty-some thousand to the general fund if I can per... Is that a yes, or...
Didn't she have last year's numbers?
Right, they did, you already approved that thirty-four thousand for the...
I'm just wondering if she reduced... If she reduced, when I asked her the general fund hit, where we were at, if she took some out and now we're putting it back in, I wanna make sure that...
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. That's a negotiation, everybody leaves angry. That's when you know if this is successful. Scott, do you have something you wanna add? Sounds like maybe you've got some great news for us.
Yeah. There's some increases here too that we could move down.
All right, so...
As we're looking...
Lay, lay them on me, what do you got here for us?
Well, we went up ten thousand in other supplies, ten thousand in household...
So how much, cause let's just talk about the reduction. So other supplies, you're at thirty-five to forty-five?
Mm-hmm.
Can we stay at thirty-five?
We can.
Make that thirty-five.
Yeah, that may lead to a transfer at some point, but I think we're fine.
Let's not talk, let's stay in here now. What other kinds of things can you reduce? You, you got vehicle repairs, ten grand, that's up from zero, is that an accurate number?
Well, we have animal control now.
Oh, yeah, I got you. What about, um, the vet services, fifty, pretty accurate?
Yeah.
How about household and vetting? You're from fifteen to twenty-five.
Yeah. With some of this stuff, if we put it on Facebook, we'll get enough donations.
So maybe we can take that fifteen back down to fif... Take that twenty-five back down to fifteen.
We can do that.
Uh, that's twenty thousand, right there.
I think that works.
Vicki, you got that?
Yes.
I mean, we really want to invest in this animal shelter. We really wanna make it work.
That's not gonna hurt us, I think, I think we can do that.
I'm back to talking about the raises.
Yeah.
I'm back, I'm on your team. So Vicki, that's a reduction of, what, twenty-something, twenty?
Twenty.
Who, who are we actually...
From what was proposed, right?
Yeah.
We got a vet...
Yeah, yeah, but you had it proposed in there. Right? I'm sorry, what, Jeff?
I'm just kinda questioning, who are we actually hired for twenty-two thousand? I mean, that's just an unbelievably low salary to begin with. What are we, is it a part-time individual, is it...
No, that's full-time.
It's a full-time, but I, it was two of my part-time people I moved.
Moved up.
So you were, you took back what they proposed increases.
Mm-hmm.
Now we're, now we're, it's a money ball now, now we're just trying to protect the money for the raises. So what's the net...
Well, right now, there, the, the general fund, that includes the new position that you approved. It's at the five thirteen figure that you're seeing there. It does not include any of the raises.
Wait a minute, five thirteen, wait, say it again, what?
Five hundred and thirteen, oh nine three.
That's with the new position and these changes, that does not include the raises.
That's the grand...
Yeah, I did, I think the question was, what was the number before we found twenty, before we found twenty grand? What was the additional to the general fund if the raises were hit?
So...
So we had a number and then we got twenty back in to try to take that number down.
Plus back of Perth, but... So you gotta, so your request here...
Put that over here.
Yeah, that one's good.
No, don't worry about that, thirty-five hundred.
We cut those raises in half, those eight thousand.
Yeah, what about the twenty-two to twenty-six?
Can we do that?
Is that a good start, kind of a, baby steps here, guys.
Twenty-two, I think that's reasonable.
I can do that.
So make the two twenty, the thirty thousands, make them twenty-six thousands. You with me, Vicki?
No, which one did you just say would be?
The two kennel animal to help and the rescue event volunteer. Make those twenty-sixes instead.
Twenty-six, okay.
And then that would be split between the general fund and the municipalities.
Okay.
You guys on, up on that?
So that'd be thirteen K apiece. In here.
I'm making a motion, accept that.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Before we have the numbers.
I have a pretty good idea.
Right.
Vicki, you wanna give us that?
For the animal shelter budget or the total?
Give me the animal shelter budget and then give me the total. Well, when I say total, I wanna know how much money we have left for raises.
Okay, we, we might have to come back because of the split with half of the salary and the...
It's not gonna be that much, but go ahead.
Yeah, it'll be close.
We're almost there.
Eight sixty-nine, seven ninety-nine, that's our cushion.
All right.
Something's changed.
What'd you say four percent was? Eight twenty...
Seven fifty-eight.
Oh, you took it down, it was one point, it's seven seventy-nine.
Seven fifty, seven fifty-eight, four seventy-three was the four percent.
Yeah, but that number's changing because if we, as we give special raises, those guys aren't gonna be in the four percent.
How much is four percent?
Depends on how much you make.
Yeah.
Let's assume you made a hundred thousand.
You guys beat me into a...
But I wanna see what these guys...
Okay, I'm trying to lead us down a path here.
Sure.
What do we got, look?
That's not more, if you know what I mean. Nope.
I got a real good feeling we're gonna get there. Don't give me that look, auditor. I'm allowed to be enthusiastic. I did it once.
Seven fifty.
You don't, I don't think so.
Seven fifty, four percent.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You said seven fifty.
Yeah. Seven hundred and...
All right, so what, so did we already vote on this animal shelter thing?
Yeah.
Everybody's okay with this? Everybody's okay with this?
We didn't finalize, we didn't say...
Yeah, all in favor? Aye.
Just to clarify, all the special raise requests, except those two, were reduced to twenty-six? That's what you just said?
Yes, we're waiting right now.
Thank you.
And we're going to double back around. Okay, so that sounds pretty cool, pretty cool. I thought we did the memorial opera house.
I don't think so.
That's a non-general fund, we'll go back to it later.
I'm right here.
I'm not kidding. Guys, is a non-general fund request for the memorial opera house...
Our motion is to be accepted.
I think I want to wait until the end of the meeting.
They're doing a great job over there.
All in favor, see if I was saying aye? Aye, opposed, all right. If you leave, we're...
I'm not leaving, I'm not leaving, I don't trust you.
Smart woman. Tell me to, all right. All right, so, now we have, we're back to the jail and the sheriff. And as much as nobody, as much as we've had a lot of discussion about this, I would like to suggest at this point, we just give, instead of the guys that have already gotten special raises, we just do a four percent raise across the board. And see what we have left. Anybody think? I can't make that motion, I'm chairing this meeting.
I'm motioning.
We're motioning a second for a four percent increase across the boards, discussion. Vicki? You seem sort of getting ready to say something.
Okay, so is this four percent just for the sheriff and jail or everybody else? And to clarify, does this exclude the people who just got the special raises?
Let me try this again, I have a suggestion, a four percent raise across the board, except for the people that have gotten the special raises.
Okay, good.
And the motion's with me on that, right?
Right.
Another second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Revis.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronover. Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Five to zero.
What do we have left?
We didn't vote on the jail, yes, or no?
That may do it. We have a hundred and nineteen thousand.
Now, that, we'll have to go back and really find, go budget by budget and look at the true FICA and...
But you think we're about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand left?
Hundred and nineteen.
Hundred and nineteen thousand left. Okay, I'd like to jump back to the jail and the new positions. You've asked for, we've already dealt with the replacing one, you have two first-class jailers and one chaplain. We don't have enough money to do all three of them.
Can we do the chaplain?
We could do two out of the three. What do you choose?
I would do the chaplain and then one jailer.
That work?
Most of that proves.
There's a motion on the floor, a second, any discussion?
No, appreciate you working with us.
All in favor, see if I was saying aye? Aye, opposed? That's that. What do we have left?
We're there.
We have a little bit of work going on.
All these...
No, fifteen thousand.
You guys, kidding me, how much?
Fifteen thousand.
All right, I like it, I like what this has given. Now, that concludes the evening for the jailers, the sheriff, the mayor. Okay, now, we're not done. We're going to take a second.
We appreciate what you guys do, we'll give you more of it.
What else do you want? I would do more.
Yeah?
You want? I want to see, I just want to make sure. Okay, so... All right, so we understand, we just voted to give four percent to anyone that didn't get a special raise, so all the other requests for special raises just got four percent that we haven't already dealt with individually. So what does that leave us with?
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen thousand dollars, any others that we have to address, Vicki?
I don't have a change we've got in our pockets.
You chose, you really, you chose poorly, they got four percent. You understand that, Vicki, no one's getting past the four.
Yeah, and this is where it's going to get, we're going to have to go budget by budget, and if there's any discrepancies, we will report back to you at your council meeting, but it won't be a laundry list of changes, it'll be one change, right?
Who are we missing?
According to our records, you have not yet done E-911 surcharge, is that correct? And we're still waiting on House Department.
All right, so let's talk about the...
No.
Four percent's what you get? Four percent?
Greater than two. We just had to go there first because we had no idea what we were doing.
All right, Vicki, I know what you're saying. But there's a will, there's a way. What else do we have to address tonight? We have the E-911 surcharge, right? Sure, come on down.
Containment in the surcharge, if the general fund hit, so you still have fifteen K after this approval.
There we go. Okay, what's your problem with this request? There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I second.
Discussion. I just don't want this night to end.
You're doing a good job so far.
All in favor, all in favor, see if I was saying aye? Aye, opposed? Okay, so we got that one done, then we have, did we already do the commissioners' facilities inspector?
Yes, I did that one.
And we did highway, and we did health service inspector, and we did stormwater, and we did...
Do we have a health third deputy increase? That was already voted on, it's under wages, that's done.
I don't think we did. So the health department...
Non-general, we got to vote that.
The non-general, did we deal with that third deputy increase? You what?
You need a client.
You need a client? Oh. That's off the table, all right, yeah, it's non-general fund, it doesn't matter anyway. Then, we did the opera house, we did that stormwater, we did domestic violence prosecutor, right? Did we do domestic violence prosecutor? Yes, we did, because that's not a domestic. Then, we did highway. Vicki, am I missing one?
I don't believe so.
Ten minutes, no?
Can't leave yet, got more to do.
All right, anything else we need to address?
Uh-oh. On my LRS budget, I turned in, I hadn't got the figures from, in that, we ordered our salt ahead of time in March, and I found out I'm going to be about ninety thousand short, and I was going to see if I could trade off ninety thousand out of my two minutes for LRS to salt.
You got that, Vicki?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
I mean, I'm just moving it around, just so I have...
All in favor, see if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Andy, is that right?
Yeah, that's cool.
Should be three hundred for salt.
Three hundred for salt, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I don't think we left any. I have the one you gave me, Vicki, can you think of anything else that we have not addressed? Does anybody else have any other understanding that we are flat out of money? Anybody else have a request to be denied? You what? Any help? We're paying people more, maybe they can do health club stuff. Are you asking us to revisit and reduce the raises, Commissioner Blaney?
You want more?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is with stormwater.
Okay, yep.
With the reorganization, I was trying to do a project manager one position. Okay, I got project manager one in highway engineering at fifty-five, and a project manager one in stormwater, and alls I wanted to do is make those two positions equal and the same at fifty-five, so that way I don't have to walk down the hall and explain to somebody why there's going to be a difference.
Didn't we vote for that? Didn't we do the project manager one as part of that vote to increase fifty-one-five to fifty-five thousand? Did you? Did you just remove the director and the assistant director?
Yeah, it's already there, we pulled the director.
So, all right, I'm cool, thank you, appreciate it.
We would ask that the commissioners would quickly revisit that one at a time.
I...
We will.
There's an understanding there.
Thank you. All right, any other things? What? All right, guys, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, good night.